Beginning to notify the community that this is something that we're going to need to talk about. I think what this is for us as school board members is a signal of the fact that we might be having in the next year or two, some very difficult conversations in terms of considering possibly closing off entry into a high school, which is very antithetical to the history of Lincoln where choice at that high school level has been so prized and valued for us. And historically, we've seen in terms of transfers that there's been this kind of magical balancing effect where all of the transfers back and forth seem to kind of balance out. And I have a sense that that's not necessarily an issue here, that it's just there's been so much growth, there have been so many new students, that we just were running out of space in this building. And so, obviously, this is something that we're getting way out in front of the conversation, which I appreciate. I heard you say that planning is going to be taking us up and considering it. I'm not looking for an answer to this tonight, but I wonder if one of the things that we could be thinking about is maybe ramping up some very aggressive marketing at North Star for the Career Academy. If we could get a couple hundred bodies from North Star, people who may have an interest in the Career Academy but don't have that awareness yet, maybe that helps alleviate this problem a little bit. So that's something that I hope somebody's kind of keeping in mind, looking at Lanny. Thank you.
My understanding is we had 400 transfer into North Star and 600 residents transfer out, and we still have a very dense population. Is that close? Are those numbers close?
Those would approximate, yeah.
I'm just going over my list of facts here. And then that we have a significant number of ELL students, or English language learners, I probably got the right acronym this time, that live in the North Star area. What impact does an ELL classroom have on the programmatic use of space in a building?
It does require some additional spaces due to the types of courses that need to be offered for students. And we've taken that into consideration. We're looking at program options that we can take some of the pressure off of North Star by adding some additional ELL programming at other high schools and beginning the process of kind of drawing those numbers off of North Star onto a Northeast or other high schools as needed. And what it requires is, just like any student needs, we offer the courses that are appropriate to that. Those tend to be smaller numbers, but have to also coincide with like courses, but an adaptive type of a version of a course. And so, you're running a couple of versions of courses, or you're embedding things. But that's some of the space issue, but I wouldn't say that that is a single driving factor. It's that, still, the attendance area itself. And I wanted to just revisit something that Ms. Mungard said, too, for clarity, is, you know, it's that balance between what you said with students who are in the North Star attendance area and who may continue to move in, whether it's students who are in an ELL program or the regular education program, which we still have to allow to attend at home high school, balanced with the choice piece. And so, I think we just want to be real clear that if you move into the North Star attendance area, that doesn't prohibit you from attending there.
One of the charges I would like to send back to the planning committee is that you consider to look at the boundaries of North Star, well, of all of our high schools, and see if you can do some redrawing of lines. I'd like to not have us look at moving whole neighborhoods out from, that have, in traditional history, been moved around. That's my own preference. I'll gladly talk to planning members later on that if they'd like. The other thing is, I asked for this to come in a resolution form to the board. I asked for it to come tonight when we were planning the agenda. One of the things is, we need the people to understand the seriousness of when it gets to this type of maximum growth in a building, that we need to probably either change some boundaries and move some lines, which is a lot slower process, and put a process in place when it gets to a critical level. And maybe action by the board, which sets aside the policy for a limited time, is the way to do this. Several of our neighbor districts that have large school districts like ours actually put the list of closed and open schools on a list and adopted each year. It's kind of a cool way to do it, because nobody can be surprised when they say, "Oh, I didn't know that was open." Well, we voted on it in January or February. So it might be something that I would ask the planning committee to also look at something like that, possibly for the future. We have significant growth in the north side of town. I know Coosier is at the limit. I know Sco is close. There's just a lot of growth in all four quadrants of our community. Because I live in the north side, I know where the growth is there, but I see it everywhere. All you have to do is drive around our community. This is not going to be a problem we get to deal with once and then walk away from. To my new colleagues, boundary hearings are the most fun that you will ever have, and I'm just preparing you for it. So this will be your first experience of that. And one final question, I don't need the answer today, but if you have it, that would be awesome. What percentage of high school students generally go to their schools that they live in, and the boundaries that we draw for them?
It's about a third. So about a third of students make the choice.
So two-thirds go to their home?
Two-thirds go to their homeschool.
Okay.
And it varies by school, but that's what I would apply for the whole school district.
Okay. So generally, most of the kids go to the school in the area, so if we redraw the lines, that should possibly offer some relief. It just won't be tomorrow.
Correct.
Okay. Lanny?
Just a couple of responses to some of the comments and questions from my colleagues. The boundaries are definitely a process that the planning committee is looking at, not just at the high school level, but we have specifically started talking about how can we address North Star in a longer term through boundaries. And then I believe we have a list of schools that are open and closed by grade level that we use as part of our transfer appeal process. So that information should be available, and we should be able to get that out there. And then finally, to Don's point, I would just note to all North Star parents of sophomores that there is a Career Academy information session tomorrow night at 7:00 out at the Career Academy. And so, even if your school were not overcrowded, it'd be a great time to go out there, learn more about the exciting programs that we have available at the Career Academy.
Annie?
Just two things. I think also, I don't see this as a problem. I see this as a wonderful, nice situation that happens with a vibrant, growing city, and that the north side of town, which is my stomping grounds and my growing up part, is like, it's wonderful that we have such, so many kids that are here and are being part of this and our growth. And so, it's just one of those things that, that's why, what makes it such a good place to live. I'd also want to put out there, as a parent who has gone through the recent process of where I want my child to go to high school, that one of the wisest things that another parent said to me was, "You can't make a bad choice of where your child goes to high school in Lincoln." And I truly do believe that. I think each child has their needs, but we have a lot of choice throughout the city. Yes, if you had your sights set on being a Gator, it would be terribly disappointing. But if you were looking for either the APU or any kind of whatever your child is desiring, we have plenty of, anywhere you go, you're going to get a solid high school experience. And I speak from, as a parent, as well as a board member on that, that I truly do believe that. So I, North Star, they're a solid school. We've got to figure out how, this is, I think, a great way of saying, "We want to help them stay solid. All those kids deserve to have classrooms in which that their teachers are best planning for," and this seems like, this is a way for us to start that process.
So note to parents, if you want your kid to be a Gator, you better get it in by January 31st.
January 31st.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? This will come back for a vote in February, and the planning committee may have some revisions to this, or they may send it just exactly as it is. Thank you. Moving on, second reading for action. It's Policy Committee, the 8,000 Series. Barbara, you're chair of that committee, and Mr. John Neal.
Okay, I'm going to go and move approval of 10.1.1 and 10.1.2, which is Policy 8,000 Series and Policy 8442, which concerns board operating procedures.
Now, Matt?
Oh, second.
And then I'm going to turn it over to John Neal for any questions and maybe a little recap of what this is about.
Sure. 10.1.1 is the reaffirmation of those policies that weren't recommended for change. They've all been reviewed by staff and are considered to be appropriate as they're written. And then 10.1.2 adds in, 8442 really deals with how we use Robert's Rules of Orders, and there's lots of nuances in Robert's Rules of Orders. And this creates a real consistent path for the vote, for the board to vote, to take board action. It's very predictable for board members. It does not change any of our statutory responsibilities in places that statute requires a two-thirds majority or three-fifths majority. Those all still apply. This just makes all of our regular board actions a motion, a second, and a majority vote of those present.
Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Item 10.2 from the superintendent would be the Early Childhood Program Expansion Grant Application. Could have a motion. Don?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Annie?
Yes, I can.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt, to approve the Early Childhood Program Expansion Grant Application. This was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. Those for discussion were Dr. Stavum and Carol Lucas-Rick. Seeing no questions. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, if I can get my computer to pop. We have no items removed from the, we have no expedited items. We have no items removed from the consent agenda, informational items. Do I have anything else from any other board committees? Seeing none. Mr. Boswell from the Career Academy, you want to make your same announcement again for all students?
All right. People can watch the replay on that.
There you go.
However, tonight, I would ask Connie to give an update on the partnership summit that was on Friday. I was ill and unable to attend, but Connie and Matt, I believe, were able to attend. I understand it was a great event, so.
It was fabulous. So Matt, fill in if I miss anything here. So Dr. Dan Honsi gathered us there, and he kind of gave us an update on what was going on, just a brief semester recap. Very inspiring, great numbers going on there. They're helping the kids, they're getting all of those first-year things all figured out. But what's interesting to me was they had a student panel, and they had a boy there from one of our high schools that said he was the most quiet student at his school, never spoke, never did anything. Now, since he's been at the Career Academy, he has so much confidence. He walked into one of his classrooms, I think, and he spoke or something, and the teacher looked up and couldn't believe it was him talking. So I think the Career Academy is really giving our kids more confidence, they feel better about themselves. It's just a win-win, so I highly encourage parents to enroll their kids in this. So that was very interesting. Also, something else that Dr. Joel and I were just talking about was this capstone project. So they're asking the seniors to get a mentor in the business field that are, some of our pathway leaders, have a mentor and solve a problem. They can have any problem that they want, but this mentor will help them to solve it. So one of them was the drone, and they were trying to figure out how maybe a drone worked or how they could use it for something, something of that sort. Also, say you're in the culinary department, how do you cater for 50 people? What does it look like? What's timing look like? So it was very interesting that they're going to go ahead and they're going to have mentors. Did I miss anything?
All right, that's good. It's just the idea that bringing a connection from the real world to the classroom and the willingness of all those partners, we had several hundred businesses represented that are willing to work with our students on a one-to-one basis. So it's a work in progress, and I know Dr. Honsi and his team are trying to figure out exactly how to manifest that, but I think it's going to be great.
And the room was filled. We were so impressed. Matt and I couldn't believe it. We sat down at lunch and just looked around, like, where did they all come from? So it was great. Thank you for letting us attend.
Anything you want to add, Matt?
I guess I'd say, from the student panel, one thing that really stood out to me was just the passion that these kids had to explore a potential career opportunity at a young age without spending lots of money on college classes and moving away to find out they don't like that career. But it was really to see how these four students really did, have really engaged and have a high passion for these areas they're exploring, so.
Good job. Anything else on the Career Academy? Okay. Moving on, from the superintendent, we have the superintendent's update.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Danick. February 10th is culminating activity with Prospera Lincoln. I know that we're going to have quite a number of staff that are going to be there. Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town, but they've asked me to do a kind of a video with regard to the early childhood goal that's been developed. If you're interested and you have time, it's 7:30 in the morning, it's going to be a big community event. If you let Laura know, she can get you signed up if you haven't already. That's been a great work in progress. And, you know, just like the Career Academy Partnership Summit, every meeting that I've gone to, from the Steering Committee to the Planning Committee to the Individual Goal Committee, has just impressed me with the quality of folks and the time that they're willing to put in to help make Lincoln a better community. You know, it's all about lifting Lincoln up, and of course, we believe that if we lift up our most vulnerable, which is kids with needs, then all of Lincoln gets lifted up. So it's going to be a great event. If you have a chance to go, I think you'll appreciate being there. Legislation in session, we're paying attention. I know you're paying attention. There's a number of bills out there that I so appreciate having Mr. Neal and some of the folks that he works with, because we try to, and Dr. Stanish, we try to get some quick analysis going on these bills, because they're happening very, very quickly. But there's been a lot of discussion about property tax relief and limiting spending, and you just know that we'll be pulled into those conversations pretty directly. And then, in front of you, as a, just a small, small token for your tireless commitment to 40,000 students, and in recognition of National School Board Member Week, Month, is an order form for a polo shirt. Now, if you remember, those of you who've been on the board for a while, we attempted to buy those nice button-down shirts that we were pretty proud of, but unfortunately, I don't think anybody ever wore them, because they didn't fit, right? This way, you get to choose your own, and if you get that, leave that tonight, Laura will take care of it. And I want to extend it out just a little bit and say that next Tuesday, apparently the kids are aware that snowmageddon may very well materialize. And I heard, I heard today it could be up to three feet of snow with 50 mile an hour winds. When it misses us and the sun is out, if we can get these orders in and these shirts are back, wear them outside and just kind of a display of unity. I want to thank Mary Kay and the Communications Department. You know, Monday's little snow squall, I don't know that anybody predicted that, certainly we didn't. And it always raises the question on the part of concerned parents, you know, why don't we let school out when these things occur? And, you know, can we do early, late starts, and can we do early dismissals? And again, I know experienced board members have heard me say this before, too, and Communications did a great job of doing a Q and A on that very thing, but it is next to impossible to delay the start of school unless it's a severe emergency, and to let school out early. It disrupts childcare, it disrupts family continuity, it creates a whole other set of problems that, you know, unfortunately, it's a lot easier and much more manageable if we keep schooling for the entire day. But having said that, you know, we don't want to take chances with kids' lives either, so, you know, we'll always make that, hopefully, the safest and best decision. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joel. Monthly financial review, are there any questions or concerns? Connie?
I do have something to say. I've been on the board now for six months, and I decided it was time to dig in, so I would like to give a compliment to Liz Stanish and her department. They sat with me for an hour going over the financials, line by line by line. I can say, I pretty much understand everything, not everything, pretty much, most everything. And we are transparent. We're fabulous. I mean, I just could not believe everything that I learned that day and how transparent we are, so thank you. I feel much better.
And thanks to Jill Pauley. I know she was instrumental in your meeting, so I know she's not here tonight.
She's not here.
She's doing another duty for the school district as we speak.
And Jill talks to you, so you can understand it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, strategic plan update, communication and public engagement. That would be Mr. John Neal and Mary Kay Roth. Oh, well, it's not Mary Kay. It must be Ms. Burbach.
John Neal and Mindy Burbach, so we will, oh, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share, give a quick update, very quick update, on a strategic goal on communication and public engagement. And this is the first of what will be an update as we go throughout the year of all the strategic plans. I would like to begin just by saying thank you to not only the communications staff, but the commitment of the entire district to community engagement. Communication staff helps with that process, but what, it's a school building, or a department, or whomever, everyone is focused on engaging the community to make the school district better. I think the conversation about the school calendar is a great example of how that happens in everything we do. So, so the strategic goal. Strategic goal is to engage the public for the purposes of improving student learning. It's not just to engage the public, but to have a result in student learning, and that's a critical piece. So the actual, actions leading to this true partnership is we try to measure them, we wanted to put them in action steps and to help describe what that is. So the first way a district might engage or not engage is sitting. That means they're not, either they're not trying to engage, or they're purposely trying not to engage, and that's not Lincoln Public Schools. The next step, next level, next level up in engagement is telling. That's where the district, or the school building, or the department shares information out, so they're telling. They're active, but the engagement isn't telling. Level three, the next best level, is listening. So it's not just sharing, but also listening back, that engagement back and forth. And the highest level, our goal of where we want community engagement to be all the time, is partnering. And that's where there's an interdependent relationship between the community and the district, working together, sharing resources, and sharing decision-making. So let's talk about our progress on these levels. We're not even, oh, I'm sorry, within each of the levels, there are some activities that no matter what level you're focusing on, building relationships, linking your engagement to learning, addressing the differences throughout the different groups to try to meet different needs, supporting advocacy, so creating advocates within the community who are self-advocates, and then sharing power. So first level, telling, we're skipping sitting, because we don't do any sitting, and it doesn't make for a very exciting slide. So this is telling.
Communication 101, right?
Communication 101, sitting doesn't work. So this is the Important Information Handbook. This is something that we share in telling all the different things that need to be done in the district. This is shared with 40,000 students' homes, so each home has access to this important information handbook. The annual report, and we picked our update to be in January to coincide with the mailing of our annual report, and that goes to 120,000 homes. And it reports on our achievement, our budget, it tells about the district. And then finally, our webpage, another way that we tell our story, and our webpage last year had over 20 million page views, so it's a regularly visited site for Lincoln Public Schools. There's also ones that are more specific to individuals, our parent view, parents, it's how we share out with the parents, but it's very specific to their needs, and looking at their child's information helps inform them, or school messengers, the phone calls and emails that they receive, it's a message that may be from their school that's specifically related to them. And that doesn't include all of the newsletters and teacher emails and all the information that comes out in Friday folders and Wednesday folders and community news that goes out to share information. Or even if you happen to come to the learning lunch on Wednesday, or on Tuesday to learn about pet therapy dogs, we tell the story of Lincoln Public Schools and what we do. But that's telling. That's part of engagement, you can't have engagement without it, but it's not full engagement. The next level is listening, and these are just some examples, not an exhaustive list of how we listen. We had a work session just before on Let's Talk, and we've tried MindMixer and other methods of creating a digital communication to be able to talk and share with parents. We also use Twitter, not only to push information out in telling, but we also monitor Twitter for questions that people have and comments toward us, and listen to those. And right now, we have over 15,000 followers, as you include the district and schools. With Facebook, we have over 20,000 fans on Facebook, not only sending information out, but engaging people in conversation. We also have human interaction in, with committees like the Community Curriculum Council that helps us with our school calendar, with our Citizens Education Academy, a group of citizens that agree to, once a month, to come in and visit different school sites and learn different things about the community, and share their thoughts, both in surveys and conversations. But all these kinds of listening helps us improve, and this doesn't include all the things that a principal does at their building with PTS, with PTO groups and other meetings that they have. And then finally, we have a very official, very scientific listening group in our ESU. They do our surveys of parents each year to help us understand perspectives of buildings, perspectives on staff, and perspectives of the district, a very scientific way to help us understand how we grow and look at that growth year after year. And then finally, level four, partnering, and this is where Mindy's going to give an example of how we're growing in that area, but this is just a couple of examples of what we're doing right now. One, in our community learning centers, each one has a school neighborhood advisory council made up of the coordinator at the site, lead agency representative, school principal, a neighborhood representative, a family member, and a student, at least that group, if not more, to come together and make plans, not only for programming for the school based on needs, but also the neighborhood that surrounds the school. It's broader than just the school. They make decisions together, they share resources together, it's a true full partnership to strengthen neighborhoods. And I think that's one of the reasons the board set that as a goal to expand to the rest of the district. The Family Literacy Program for eligible families to come in, the parents set goals on their learning. They learn, become more skilled based on the goals that they have, as well as creating partnership time with their students, where they partner together in learning at the school, to practice those partnership in learning activities that they can then take and do at home. That's all planned, developed, and delivered in partnership with the community. And finally, one we've talked about quite a bit, most recently, is Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools, our Business and Industry Community, Southeast Community College, Lincoln Public Schools, Nebraska Department of Ed, and its commitment to build and grow the Career Academy. And that has all been shared resources, shared decision-making, shared vision. It's a great example of the kind of partnership we want to continue to develop in the district. These are three examples. There's lots and lots of examples, but one of the ways we wanted to improve, especially on the partnering level, is to make it more comprehensive. I'm going to jump and come back to that page. Because one of our responsibilities in our continuous improvement process, which is part of our accreditation process, whether it's our accrediting organization in advanced ed, whether it's the state of Nebraska, US Department of Ed through Title I, is to engage families in meaningful ways to improve achievement. And we're trying to build our capacity and comprehensiveness of that through a family engagement toolbox. Mindy's been critical in leading that endeavor with members of the continuous improvement process and teams, so I'm going to let her talk about that endeavor. Mindy?
Well, we thought it was really important to start with staff when we talk about improving family engagement. And so, how could we provide them with successful tools or proven programs that work, then they can be more confident in providing those excellent opportunities, those partnership opportunities for families? The Family Engagement Toolbox is an idea that came about after asking the question, what are we doing well in our schools, and how can we improve upon that? And then how can we share that across the district so that others can build upon those successes? The goal is, of the toolbox is to provide a constantly evolving resource for school improvement leaders and principals, tools that they can take and expand on, modify to fit their school needs in order to create quality engagement opportunities for families. Currently, we're working on putting all these tools together on a webpage that would be accessible to all schools. We just started this fall building some of those tools. Think of it as more like an internal social network. We're going to allow schools to see these tools, comment on them, talk about how they modified them to make them work for their schools, and maybe collaborate with other partners across the district. To communicate our effort with staff, we teamed up with Sarah Salem during her monthly school improvement team meetings. She invites us to come in, show the tool we've been working on for the month, we show a short video, then we include a sheet that tells somebody who might be interested in implementing the same sort of program. We give them a sheet on how to get started, what are those steps to get it started, and then who to contact if they're interested in more information. Examples of some of the partnerships we've highlighted so far are the community cafes hosted by Leanne Johnson and the CLCs, also the parent network groups at Randolph Elementary, they have two. They have one for kindergarten families, families who have kindergarteners that kind of helped them get acclimated to the school, and they have one for Spanish-speaking families. And what's great about these networks is they provide child And what's great about these networks is they provide childcare at the school, so while the parents are there, meeting with the staff, going over some of the school rules and processes and policies and stuff, those younger kids are being acclimated to the school environment already, which is really neat to see. When we showed that video, Sarah Salem was able to show the school improvement teams how they could modify that certain thing to fit within, whether it be another elementary school, another program, or a high school, how they could maybe find those subgroups that aren't being served, and how they can get them more active in their schools. In addition to building the toolbox, we've also pulled together a group of people to talk about what does quality engagement look like. So we include the CLCs, school improvement teams, homeless liaisons, several areas of federal programs, early childhood, and multicultural liaisons to start that conversation of what is quality engagement. Through this entire process, there's been one theme that keeps surfacing, and it's, you know, our goal is to invite families in, to teach them about the learning process, and that's going to help the student then learn better. But really, what our schools and programs are finding out is that when they invite families in, they're learning much more than the parents are taking away.
Okay. The goal throughout this process is to try to improve our partnership. Because when you have partnering, as distinguished from listening and telling, these are the results that are correlated even stronger with partnering. Faster literacy acquisition, earning higher grades and test scores, enrolling in higher level programs, promoting more and earning more credits, adapt better to school and attend more regularly, have better social skills and behavior, graduate and go on to higher education. That's the importance of partnering. You can't do without telling, you can't do without listening, but our goal is partnering. When you look on our progress, feel we're well beyond sitting, really strong in sharing in our talking. We do leave a little gap because we're always trying to improve and get better. Also with listening, you saw in the work session a couple of weeks ago about Let's Talk, we're always trying to get better and better at what we do. And then in partnering, to grow both in our, in creating true partnerships by combining existing and new best practice strategies in talking, listening, and partnering, but build capacity so we have effectiveness, but by using district-wide programs like school improvement, we build systems for that comprehensiveness. It's happening in every single building, it's reviewed every year, we look at results every year, so to build the strength of the district. So we feel somewhat in this part of the agenda like we're the last class before dismissal on a pretty sunny day, but we'll be happy to stay and answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Annie?
How do you, are assessing where to stand on those one, two, three, four steps?
Right now, we're just, we're looking at the research and the best way to measure, so we're new, that's some research done by Karen Mapp on those four levels. We're going to build a rubric from her research and use that to measure. Right now, we have an understanding of what it is, we're not quite as certain where we are, so those are estimates right now, but it'll be rubric-based on one through four.
Dr. Joel?
You know, most districts in the country, this is one of their strategic goals, is to do, become more effective at community engagement. And I just feel like we are very, very fortunate with the folks that we have on our communications team and throughout the district in terms of our willingness to not only react when we have to react, and we all get plenty of opportunities to do that, but also to proactively look at ways to strengthen our engagement. I feel like we're ahead of the curve on that, and there's always room to grow, of course, but there's lots of opportunities for voices to be expressed and to be listened to. Of course, a lot of people will evaluate the effectiveness of a communication program with whether or not they agree or disagree with the ultimate outcome, and with all the issues that we deal with, of course, we can't do it, but we can always be open and engaging and listening, and so, thank you, great presentation.
Any other questions? Good job. Very engaging. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we have the announcements of upcoming events for the board. February 3rd will be the Chamber Coffee at the Chamber Office at 8:00 a.m., and February 9th is our next board meeting here at LPSDO. Moving on, this is a time in the agenda where anyone in the audience has a second chance to come and talk to us. I see no one coming to the podium. We do have a request for a closed session for items one, three, four, and seven, that would be negotiations, litigations, security, and legal advice. Mr. Boswell?
I move that the board recess and go into closed session for item one, negotiations, item three, litigation, item four, security, and item seven, legal advice.
Is there a second? Connie?
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the board recess from this meeting and move into closed session for items one, negotiations, three, litigation, four, security, and seven, legal advice. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
This meeting is recessed to go into closed session, but all you get to go home.